Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Recording.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Brookline Select Board for August 19th. The time is 6:31. I will note that here physically in person are myself, Gwen Tanza, Bruce Mello, Mark Bills, and Guy Tanza. And on the Zoom call are Joseph Dutton and then also the folks from Fact TV. We also have Leanne Parker from the Meeting House Committee joining us. I had put on the agenda that I thought Doc Madsen might be joining, but it's actually Leanne and possibly will be joined by Dan Towler in a little while also probably. So first up is review changes to the agenda. Joseph, did you want to speak to adding an early agenda item for your proposed rules? Additional rules?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to add to the agenda review and then vote on the proposed rules that I emailed to all the members of the board.
Okay, and the suggestion would that is that that would be the very first thing we do prior to anything else tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just sort of poll people. I'm in favor of adding that and having a discussion about it early on. Gwen, what's your feeling?
It's fine.
Are you in agreement? Okay. Bruce?
No problem.
No problem with that? Okay. Shelby is not yet here. So hearing your consensus, then we're going to add that as the very first thing that we do tonight. I will note quickly before we get to that, though, that there are no unscheduled members of the public. Okay, so then first up is discussion of what is named in the document that Joseph sent around, Brookline Select Board Hybrid Online Meeting Rules. Joseph, do you want to kick off the discussion about what you were thinking and just speak to it briefly?
Yeah, um, you know what I was feeling is that we needed to address the nature of this hybrid online select board meetings that we've been having to undergo for the last several months and just try to address some of the specific problems that have arisen because of us not all being married person. As David pointed out when I was discussing this with him earlier, some of the rules and procedures are quite redundant to our regular rules and procedures, but then some of them are quite specific to the online setting.
I'd like to kick off, well, I have some suggestions. In my opinion, I like this idea and I do think that a number of these are good things that we should have codified so there's no confusion about how we're going to try to do things. But to my eye, the first one, two, three, four, five, I would say, paragraphs, the last one being any member of the public that is unscheduled will be given two minutes on the floor. Those first five points, I think, are already captured in the Select Board Rules and Procedure. And I mostly think we shouldn't include those in an additional set of rules just because they slightly in a few places might contradict the rules of procedure that we've already adopted. So my suggestion would be to actually remove those first five paragraphs. But then other than that, I think it all makes sense and is a good idea. That's, I'll kick that off. Gwen, we'll go around and just give everybody a chance to quickly weigh in. Gwen, what's your feeling about the, what's been presented?
I agree with you. The first part does seem a little repetitive, so I have no problem with that.
And you're okay with what's laid out for the other rules?
Yes.
Okay. Bruce, what's your feeling about it?
I saw, yeah, not too much of a problem with it, but I thought a lot of it was repetitious. What I don't want to see happen is the Select Board rules be superseded by anything on this.
That's what you just said.
So if this is just an online meeting rules, it doesn't really pertain to a house, because that's what it says, hybrid online meeting rules. I thought in a number of instances, I can see one where I felt that the chair was restricted. I didn't quite like that. The discussion of the issues, the chair will first recognize themselves to speak their opinion on a matter of two minutes. I don't particularly like the idea of restricting the chair to two minutes. I think they should be able to run the meeting on issues. So I didn't like that section. That's about the fourth paragraph from the bottom. And everything else, hang on one. It's hard to, just to be done. It's hard to control a meeting that's over the phone. That's why I'm here. So whatever you want to do with the rest of it, it doesn't matter to me because I'm not going to be doing it on the phone anymore.
Okay. Joseph, was there a reason that, I guess just probably, am I right to sort of keep things consistent with other places in our existing rules of procedure where we've had a general process of trying to limit initial time for things to two minutes? Is that why you put in the two-minute restriction, suggested restriction for each of the board members speaking on issues?
Yeah, that is why I put that in there. And specifically to the chair, I think that obviously the chair will speak their opinion relatively independently of the proceedings of the meeting. And so like if you're calling for amendments or anything like that, that doesn't really go into your two minutes of opinion on a matter. But I think that when the procedures have all been laid out and then we're moving into the board's opinions on a matter, the chair, I believe, should have the same amount of time to speak as any other member of the board.
Right.
But, you know.
I mean, the other thing I'd add about this, I mean, obviously, we have restrictions currently in the rules of procedure that limit members of the public to two minutes in discussion. And what I'll say as someone who leads the meetings, that's, you know, it's a very fluid situation whether you actually enforce these things strictly or not. I mean, I think we have always and will continue as long as I'm part of the board to, you know, encourage people to have an opportunity to speak, board members or members of the public, and complete their thoughts and get their ideas out without having a stopwatch going for starting and stopping people's time. So I can't really imagine that we're going to be enforcing that strictly under most circumstances, if any circumstances. So, you know, I don't have a problem with just it being in these rules as just a suggestion and a reminder to people that, okay, let's try to make our points brief and then give everyone an opportunity before we go back around and have further discussion on it. So I don't really have a problem with it. And I, like I said, I can't see sitting here with a stopwatch timing, everybody to make sure nobody goes for three minutes.
Good point.
Joseph, are you okay with my suggestion of removing the first five paragraphs?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I didn't really consider that some of the contradictions might very well be just from phrasing it, so.
Yeah, exactly. Right. I don't think they were intended, but it just, yeah. So the only other suggestion I would make is that perhaps we rename this Brookline Select Board Additional Rules for Hybrid Online Meetings. To emphasize the fact that these are additional rules, not the only set of rules, and to make mention of the fact that we do have a set of rules and procedure that we adopt every year and that we should be following apart from just these additional ones. Is that, do you have any issue with that, Joseph? Or does that make sense?
No, not at all. That makes sense.
Okay. Gwen, does that make sense to you?
Very good point.
Okay. Bruce, does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Yeah, Bruce.
I'm trying to drive you home the point that as everything I've read today, the Select Board Rules and Procedures, there's very little online on the VSA statute, at least I could find it. But the overwhelming consensus and thrust is that the chair controls the meeting. And I just don't want to restrict that.
I don't think it was restricting.
Yeah. No, I didn't read any of this as restricting. But I see your point. Okay. Shelby has just joined us.
Yeah, sorry about that guy.
No, that's okay. So we're in the midst of discussing the proposed rules, hybrid rules that Joseph sent out. I'll summarize briefly. By consensus of everyone so far, we are proposing to eliminate the first five paragraphs in Joseph's document. So, yeah, the first five paragraphs because they overlap or are redundant with points already laid out in our Select Board Rules and Procedure that we've already adopted. And beyond that, we're also going to slightly rename it to Brookline Select Board Additional Rules for Hybrid Online Meetings. But now that you've joined, what's your feeling about adopting these and the tweaks that I just suggested? I'll give you a chance to speak to that, Shelby.
Yeah, generally in support. I'm sorry. Generally in support. I honestly haven't had a chance to look at that until I speak to you yet, so I'm kind of looking through them right now. So I'm happy to defer for a minute while you have to keep discussing and then have a couple of minutes later. I know I'm just barking.
Yeah, I think we're pretty much at the end of our discussion now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We've been discussing it, so.
Yeah, no, I think that sounds, I think everything sounds fine as long, I like the overall intent. So as long as the eliminations were due more to redundancy than anything, I think that sounds okay.
Yeah, that was the only reason to eliminate them, because the first five paragraphs are all points which are covered in almost the exact language, but slightly different language in some cases as what's in the rules of procedure. So the wish to eliminate them is just not to create confusion or possibly any slight appearance of contradiction between the two sets of rules. And then also by specifying that these are additional rules, it harkens back to the fact that we do have a set of rules and procedure already. Joseph, did you have something else you wanted to say before we move forward?
Not that I can stick with.
Okay. All right, then I'd like to make a motion that we adopt what we are now going to call the Brookline Select Board Additional Rules for Hybrid Online Meetings, which is in the printed copy that we all have, starting with paragraph six until the end. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Seconded by Gwen. Is there any further discussion of that from anyone? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the Brookline Select Board Additional Rules for Hybrid Online Meetings as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, and I might have just violated the very first part, one of them, by not doing a roll call vote, but that's okay. I'm going to still stick with the premise that unanimous votes, I'm not necessarily going to do a roll call on. Okay, so that takes care of that, and I'll just add that Dan Towler has joined us. Hi, Dan.
Hi, David. Board members.
So next up is approving the minutes from the August 5th meeting. Gwen and I were just discussing that, once again, Shelby has been omitted from the minutes because of whatever slight she made to Peter Barris.
I'm going to start taking it personally.
In a previous lifetime or this lifetime, so we'll make sure that Shelby gets added. Down under the approved minutes, we're just going to move the little A Minutes for July 15th header up above the rest of the text. And Gwen pointed out that Arlington paving in the grid is misspelled. We'll correct the spelling of that. And then on page two, another couple edits that Gwen noted, down under the pay orders, August is misspelled. We'll fix those. Other than that, I did not see any other changes that needed to be made, and nor did Gwen. Bruce, did you see any other changes to make?
SLP building update, second page right in the middle. Last, last sentence, "there was," it's together.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And then it goes down a little further to summative reports of Mr. Tanza. Second to the, yeah, second to the last sentence, "Mr. Brimmer."
Oh, yeah.
I don't think he wanted to call you.
So not only is he omitting you, but then he's calling you Mr. Brimmer. You need to patch this up with Peter.
Okay, well, I definitely have me some, so we'll let it slide.
Okay, so that's fair enough. Shelby, did you have any other changes to the minutes other than what we've noted?
No.
Was that no, Shelby? Sorry.
She said no.
Oh, did you?
Sorry, I said no when I was on mute.
Oh, sorry, that's okay. Sorry, I didn't quite hear it. Sorry. Joseph, how about you? Any other changes to the minutes other than what's already been noted?
No.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from August 5th as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from August 5th as amended signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, then those are approved. Moving on to 6A of new business, the SLP painting and staining bids. We received three bids, which we will open now. I'm just checking that. The first bid is from someone in Windsor, Vermont. And it is a bid from David Shaw of Windsor, Vermont. I will read a great deal of these, perhaps not them in their entirety, but I will read quite a bit of them for the members that are now here in person to see them. He says, "Start date, September 12th, 2020. Pressure washing and scraping, including laying tarp and plastic securely around building and cleanup of all paint chips and debris." He breaks out the cost of that. Priming, he breaks out the cost of that. Painting, he breaks out the cost of that. Bulkhead and skirt, including pressure washing, painting, and priming, he breaks that out. Entryway, he breaks out separately. He then breaks out the addition backside, which is two big sides and end, which he breaks out separately. Weather permitting plan on every weekend until the job is complete, he says. There will be two or three of us on the site at all times, all insured. Proof of insurance will be provided when the bid is approved. His total bid is $5,940. I'm going to pass this down to Mr. Mello for him to take more of a look at. So that was $5,940 for David Shaw. Then we have another bid from Norman Holden, which is going to be a little more difficult to read because it's handwritten. It is a paint bid for the exterior of the Brookline School, two specs. I am not going to attempt to read all of his detail about his labor and what he's going to do. Some highlights that equipment and materials to be supplied by Brookline. He thanks us for the opportunity. His bid is $16,000. That's close. I'm going to pass this as well down to Mr. Mello for him to take a look at. And the last bid is from Mommy Painters for 624 Grassy Brook Road project. It says, "The building in 624 Grassy Brook Road contains lead paint and needs to be treated according to the U.S. EPA Lead Renovation Repair and Painting Program. Mommy Painters is a U.S. EPA Lead Certified, Lead Safe Certified Firm and is trained in the use of Lead Safe work practices. The cost for us to do this project is $14,500 and includes a further detailed list of improvements in the scope of work and specifications," which I am not going to read in its entirety. I'm going to pass this now down to Mr. Mello for his conclusion. Let's just give a second for Bruce to look those over and then we'll, I'll have him kick off the discussion. I don't know if everybody on the phone can literally hear the crickets that are outside. Here, we can actually hear crickets. So I guess the first thing, after saying that, I will in fact kick off the, but it'll be a question to Bruce. After having read those three proposals, do you feel that they are all proposing the same level of work and detail based on the same specifications?
Yes, except.
I'm going to, hang on one second. I'm going to ask you to really speak up as much as possible.
Oh, sorry.
Because I think it's going to be harder for people.
Shelby, can you hear me? Shelby, can you hear me?
You are certainly, yeah.
Is that better? How are we doing? I'll exercise my big mouth a little over here. How's that?
Better.
Okay. Shelby, can you hear me? Are you there, Shelby?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah. I just had it on mute.
You all might know that I did a lot of work on this. And in the interest of transparency, I sent you all at least the emails that I sent to Norman and Mo. Norman wanted to bid on this and he wanted to bid on this, so that was no secret. And same with David Shaw. David Shaw, of course, is the guy that used to work on Susie's. He's actually the husband of Angela, who is a director, I believe, of, yes, am I going out of sequence?
My question was, one mentioned lead paint, but none of the, the other two did not. Do they, are they both qualified to deal with that? Are they both under the?
That's the crux of the matter. And your direct answer to your question is, I believe, no in the case of David Shaw. I have to call Norman, but I'm almost certain that he is. He's been in business for years.
Is that why the difference in price?
No, I don't, I don't know. There's a lot of little issues here and really, I know we don't want to go on through this like in 45 minutes now. So I'll try to be as concise as I can. But Mo Mommy called me back. He was not going to bid on it. He misunderstood what I said to him in the email and I urged him, you know, wait, you know, it's not for this year, it's next year. And then he was on vacation. He was down in Allen or something. And when he came back, he called me and we met, and I met with him this morning. And I was here physically to see that he put the bid on the counter. Saying that, we've been over this building for no less than four hours, he and I, before. We were only together 20 minutes or something. He has a little pencil, a thick pencil, has a felt tip on it. It tests for lead paint. It's very simple. He puts a little fluid in it, touches whatever wood he wants to sit, wants to do, turns red, it got red. The way I understood it, and I think I've explained in previous Select Board meetings, I had to, I had checked this out. Mo said the other thing that he saw, this is that one, not today, was on the windows. I said, we're good. We're getting that out of here. So we're good with that. I had no idea that we had any other, any other issue with the.
Where were the other places?
And what we understand is just the old building on the trim.
Okay.
Okay. Now, I believe Norman, I'm almost certain Norman is certified. You have to be certified by the EPA. We could pay serious fines, anybody. I almost started working on that plan. In fact, I started scraping a few of the dents last year until I found out through Perkins' lumber, whoa, don't touch it, I could be fined three or four thousand bucks. So I took that. So anyway, to get to, to get to the question about the weapon, because that's, that's really the big deal, to decide that. Those two, and probably not Dave Shaw, I have to call my husband, if he chose to choose in for that, I doubt it. And it's not a complicated process to be certified, but that's what's a cog in the wheel. And like I told Dave Shaw, like I explained here, there's no care to do this building. The qualification to me, running this project, is to do right. We can danger safety of kids and has to be done right. I have, I don't know Dave Shaw's work fellow, we discussed this a little bit before, and I basically would have to watch it. The other two, I have extreme confidence that both of them will do their work. It's in light of what Norman's just done for me with the windows and the whole, walking the whole tape of the work that he's doing. Right across the street, Peter Meyer's house was done by Mo Mommy. As you go down the road, the yellow house on the right-hand side was done by Norman. That's, excuse me, past, past James Ince, across from the Neighbors. And he did the Neighbors, too. And Mo Mommy has done, just to give a little, has done the New Fane Town Hall, he's done Senate Convocational Church in Dumbersden, and he's kind of legendary in this page here. Okay, there's a, there's a stick line here, and this is a stick line. I created it. And it had to do, it has to do with the materials and the lift. Materials, I don't think are a big deal, because the amount of paint and stain to do that going is, it's $43 a gallon for stain W W W. Because the amount of paint and stain to do that building is, it's $43 a gallon for stain W W R. I haven't checked. So as far as cost for materials, isn't it a major expense? It might be, let's say, a thousand, fifteen thousand. It's not a huge amount.
And both these bids is with the town paint?
That's right. And I did that on purpose because I wanted to be in charge of making sure that somebody did bring over gallo paint and I didn't let on that building. That was especially in light of David Shaw. And I wasn't minimizing his quality or anything like that. I just wanted to make sure. The second key thing is, we need to rent two things. I don't think, we may have to do that with Norman and Mo Momini. But we need a gas-powered pressure washer. I called, I called two rental places yesterday. Home Depot's got three of them. And basically what you want is a gas fire generator, effective power washer. They have an extension of 18 feet, not a problem, $65 a day.
But you don't know if Norman Holden or Momini have their own pressure treaters?
I would guess that they do, but I, not to clear that up, but I would be surprised if they didn't. Okay. The more, the real stickler, Dave, is the lift.
Well, I'll back up from that. But I would argue the real stickler is the lead paint. And the certification to deal with lead paint. Because other than Momini, no one else says that they are certified. But we don't know that with certainty. Or do we know that with certainty, that David Shaw is not certified to work with lead paint? Do we know that definitively?
No, I do not know. I'm guessing he doesn't have EPA certification. We need that. Okay, but Gwen, do you have a question?
Because we have questions on if people are certified, how can we pick a, how can we pick a bid if we're not sure the other two are qualified?
Right. I mean, honestly, there's a whole bunch of reasons we can't pick a bid, that being one of them. But then also the equipment part of it being another, I guess.
So maybe this is going to be, need to be put on next week.
Clarification.
So that you can clarify who's certified. Are they going to do the pressure treaters? Do we have to provide the pressure treaters? You know, maybe just get a few more details?
I have some, but I can clarify what you're talking about, the lift point, which is the most important thing in my... I was talking about when I meant a stickler, I meant in terms of cost.
Uh huh, yeah.
And Mo Momini wanted to spend $4,000 on a lift. I didn't get a lift, a 45-foot lift from Brown, Brown up in Landery for a $1,200, $1,300 a week. And that's a big fire difference between $4,000. So to your point, Gwen, I need to hammer out these questions and maybe revisit. Revisiting on the September 2nd is not a bad idea.
Okay, so actually, let's just give Shelby and Joseph a chance to weigh in a little bit before we move to that point. Joseph, any initial thoughts before we quite likely table this until the next meeting?
Yeah, I have two, two things. First off, a question surrounding the equipment. Why would we, why would it be beneficial for the town to try to rent equipment for a contractor? It just seems like it's a, it's an extra failure point and point of confusion in this entire situation.
That's a question for me? Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Because in light of the independent person, that I needed to do that just for that situation. In light of the other two, I haven't mentioned it to Norman, but Mo would get his own equipment and stick us with a real shot in terms of price. So to me, here we go back to stickler money. That's a major issue. This is a major cost factor.
Can I just ask, when we, and maybe, sorry, did we, in the specs that we gave these people, did we tell them that we would be providing the equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So that can be clarified.
Sorry, Joseph. Joseph, you have another point?
Okay, just to finish out on the equipment and then my other point. It is concerning to me that Momini would, would say that he could provide his own lift, but it's such a steep price when we can easily, anyone can easily find a lift for, you know, less than half the cost. So that is something that's a little concerning to me. It seems like there's some sort of failure of communication. And then, my next point is a little bigger picture. It's taking a few steps back. But as, I'm sure you're aware, I was not really in favor of putting this bid out or doing this painting this year. And one of the things that, that came up in my mind was all the way back to the windows. And I obviously wasn't in favor of refurbishing the windows. I thought that was a poor investment. And one of the reasons that was given to refurbishing the windows rather than purchasing new windows is that $5,000 extra dollars is not something that we had in the budget this year. Or it wasn't something that many people were comfortable in spending extra on this building this year. And so I'm a little concerned as to why we're now contemplating spending up to $16,000 this year. It seems like I missed something here.
Well, I guess I would suggest that in light of the fact that we have, we don't know really what numbers we're talking about for any of these bids at this point because of the equipment unknown and also the certification unknown as to whether all three of these people are even qualified to do this work. I would, I suggest that we table this until the September 2nd meeting, when Bruce can get more follow-up details from these people and we can know exactly what we're talking about financially. And then, yes, I agree. Then there is a discussion as to whether we should spend this money anyway. But at the moment, we don't even know what amount we would even look into.
This money wasn't supposed to be spent this year anyway. The money's not going to be done for next year.
Correct. Except in the light of David Shaw.
Right. There's somebody who says he can do it right now.
And we have the money. Right. And even without the, even without the $4,300, even without the $4,300 always in the checkbook. We have the money in the budget.
Things have to be clarified.
Well, I mean, I guess I'd say at this point, though, yeah, I mean, that's my suggestion. We table this until September 2nd so that we can know all of these numbers. We can also have a very thorough accounting of what is in the building account as of that point, as well as we can make some projections to next year. And then we can have a more fleshed-out discussion about them and it will go where it goes based on what we all wanted to... Gwen, are you having a problem with that question? Bruce, do you have any problem with that?
No, I don't. I just want to respond to a couple of things.
Very quickly, because we're gonna discuss this all again in the next round.
I was kind of blindsided by the lead issue. Because I had two, two instances of, one was Marshall Meyer and the other was Mo Momini. There's no lead at all. Now, what really surprised me over and over that, which kind of blindsided me. So I think you want to keep those numbers initially. I got, it goes through a bunch of clarification. Initially, Norman gave me a price of $37,000. Mo Momini gave me a price in the twenties, not even the complete build there. So that surprised me one of the ones.
Okay, and that's, yeah.
I wanted to get that out and then I'll type it up.
Okay. Joseph, are you okay with that, Bruce? Table we need to, and then we, Shelby, you all right with that?
Maybe. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, all right. So we'll table further discussion of this until the September 2nd.
I'll just take copies. I'd rather have the originals in the office.
Okay. Now, moving on to seven, or sorry, six, the, the apologies to people who are online. I'm moving my laptop around to try to get the microphone closer to everybody. Moving on to six, the Meeting House Historic Building Registry. Leanne had to leave because she has another meeting at 7 o'clock. But Dan Tower from the Historical Society is here. Everyone should have received and hopefully had a chance to review what Leanne and Dan circulated, which was both the quotes from the Historic Preservation Consultant, as well as, hey guys, Guy and Mark, you either need to go outside and close the door to talk or not? Because it is resonating. So the quote from the Historic Preservation Consultant and then also the background about the FAQs about the National Register of Historic Places. Dan, do you want to speak briefly to how the Meeting House Committee got to this point and what you think the generally benefit of this would be, spending this money?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Shortly after I became involved in this committee, it occurred to me to wonder why the Meeting House, or whether the Meeting House was listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And I learned that it was not. I don't know how much you all know. Certainly you're familiar with a little bit about the National Register. It's a federal listing. The National Register, in case you didn't have a chance to look at the frequent asked questions that I sent over, the very first sentence is administered by the National Park Service. The National Register is the official federal list of districts, sites, buildings, structures and objects significant in American history, architecture, archaeology, engineering and culture. National Register properties have significance to the history of their community, state or the nation. So I looked up buildings or structures on the National Register, just for the heck of it, in Wyndham County. And there are 98 of them. Our own brown schoolhouse in Brookline was added to the register in 1977. And the old brick church up in Athens was added to the register in 1979. The only other item in Brookline is the Iron Bridge over the West River. And I wondered why, if anyone had ever looked into nominating the Meeting House or if it had been tried and rejected for listing or what. But I called the Division for Historic Preservation in Montpelier and they let me know that the building has not been ever nominated or, you know, applied for. And the person I spoke to up there, the State Historic Preservation Officer, referred me to a guy named Devin Coleman, who was the State Architectural Historian. He and I communicated back and forth. And he was familiar with the building but had not ever seen it. And about a week after, we were in touch, this is a year ago right now, August of last year, he had a scheduled visit with the Dutton Farmhouse over in Dummerston. And so he offered to come by and meet me at the Meeting House in Brookline and take a look at it. So he came by, we, you know, I showed him through the building and he was very enthusiastic about it. He said, "Definitely, this should be on the register. You know, it certainly would qualify based on its, you know, history and so on." And he also stated in an email, "We recommend that you work with a Historic Preservation Consultant who is familiar with the National Register program and listing process. Do research and write the nomination, take the photos and prepare the maps." I guess the nomination process is quite complex. The application form itself is 16 pages, which he sent me a copy of. But there's also a National Register bulletin, sort of a handbook for how to complete the National Register forms. And that is 125 pages. So that speaks to the, I guess, you know, expertise perhaps required to accomplish this application process. So he also sent me a list of Historic Preservation Consultants around the state who assist with nomination forms. And there were two people listed in Wyndham County. And I reached out to both of them. And actually only heard back from one. That was Paula Sagerman, who lives across the river in New Hampshire, but she has done a lot of work in Vermont. She's been a Historic Preservation Consultant for over 20 years. Has, as her proposal says, she has produced National Register nominations for 18 individual properties and 14 historic districts and has assisted with nomination of the buildings, including the first congregational church in Townsend, which was successfully listed in 2002. So I think this would be a great thing for the community of Brookline and for the Meeting House to be on the National Register. It's actually, does not automatically qualify us for anything special. But it certainly would, I think, be assist in grant applications to say that we are, you know, listed on the National Register. And it's just, you know, a recognition of the importance of the building to the community and the region. And there are no restrictions that come with listing. That's something that some of our committee members were concerned about. But the building, as a result of being listed with the state, which it already is, already has a layer of restriction that would prevent us from, you know, severely altering its historic character. Not that we'd be interested in doing that anyway. But there are no additional layers of restriction that go with being on the National Register. So there's really no downside that I can see. And it would be, it would be a cool thing. And for the community and the building and perhaps a help to raising money in the future. So we're proposing this to you as the select board just to see if there are any questions or concerns about the listing of the building, for one thing. And also proposing to you, ladies, for assisting us with this application, which is $1,500.
Okay.
And our committee is in favor of being nominated to speak for us on this, so...
Okay. And there was, so was it, there was, everyone on the committee was in favor of this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's, we'll go around quickly. I'm gonna kick it off. I have a couple of questions. I mean, I'm in favor, but I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good expenditure of money. One thing I just wanted to point out on the proposal from Paula Sagerman is, you know, she says payments will be due within 14 days of invoice date. We need to let her know we can't do that. We won't be able to guarantee that speedy of payment. We're a municipality. It's, we can't pay things that quickly. So she needs, she needs to understand that that kind of timing won't necessarily be possible.
Yeah.
Other than that, I didn't see, I didn't have any questions about the process. It all makes sense. I didn't really have any concerns about her qualifications for it either. We'll just go around. Gwen, questions or comments on?
I have no questions.
Okay. Are you in favor of it generally?
I think so. I think it's an important step in realizing how important the age of the building is. So I have no problem with that.
Okay. Bruce, how about you? What's your thoughts?
My thoughts are, first of all, Dan, thank you. You're doing a nice work. I so much appreciate it. Hi, Dan. Thank you for letting me see you. Hi, Dan, how are you?
Good to see you.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for doing this, after taking the time and the interest and the work. Back when I asked the meeting to resurrect itself, the group to resurrect itself back in July of 2014, I want to ask, answer two of the questions that you raised. The first one was the cost. We at that time, when we were considering going for grants, didn't go for, for two reasons. The cost and, and I jumped to that, did not have enough money for matching grants. And the second thing, which I told you about the other day, she clarified me, that it makes us available for federal grants. We were under the understanding that that wasn't the case. After looking at the paperwork that you sent through, I didn't read it verbatim, but I agree pretty well. I'm totally in support of it. Doct, uh, made me aware that it does help us with federal grants, which is great, because we could maybe get some grants depending on that. Thank you to LeAnn for getting, I don't know if everybody knows this, getting $3,000 grant for, from Wyndham Foundation for the steeple.
Yes, Bruce, I was going to mention, and I neglected to do that, but thank you. If you've seen our minutes, you're aware of that already, but.
Yeah, I did.
But we did recently receive, if I may, a $3,000 grant from the Wyndham Foundation, which helped us previously with the restoration of our windows three years ago or four years ago. So we're very happy about that. We, we asked for a lot more than that, but, you know, that's what they gave us, and we were very pleased with that. And we intend to put that towards the restoration of the steeple, which is going to cost quite a bit more than that, but we'll just have to go back to the well and apply for some more money to get that done.
Okay.
And it was primarily LeAnn's work that grant, and so we're happy about that.
Okay. Just to finish the loop on this, though, Joseph, what's your, do you have questions?
I just wanted to say.
Okay, so Bruce is just reiterating that he's in support of this. Joseph, what's your, any thoughts or questions about this suggestion?
I don't have any additional questions, but I do think it's a really good idea, and thank you all, all the members of the committee for doing this work.
Shelby, how about you?
Yes, Dan, I think it's really cool. I think it's amazing what you guys are doing with that building, and I think it would be a good idea to get it on the register also.
All right, excellent. So then, just to formalize it, I'm going to make a motion that we, I guess, that we approve the Meeting House Committee spending $1,500 for the Historic Preservation Consultant work to complete the nomination for the National Register for the Meeting House. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I second it.
Seconded by Bruce. Any further discussion from anyone? Okay, all those in favor of approving the Meeting House Committee spending $1,500 for the Historic Preservation Consultant to prepare the nomination for the National Register for the Meeting House building, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
All right. So yeah, Dan, thank you very much, you and everybody on the Meeting House Committee for all the hard work in general, and specifically on pulling this together, and let's keep our fingers crossed that it all goes quickly and smoothly.
Yes, yes, we certainly hope so, we'll certainly keep you apprised. I also forgot to mention, Paula did offer to come to one of our meetings for, you know, at her own, on her own time, and discuss this with us, which she did. So, we've had a chance to speak to her directly, and, you know, so anyway, thank you very much, board members, and thanks for your, your service to the town as well.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay.
All right, moving on to six C, the Discussion of the Recycling Site. So what precipitated this was the situation from last Monday?
Yeah, two Mondays ago, I think, yeah.
But it's an ongoing thing.
Right, although, I guess, I guess I have a question, which was, in that situation, and I don't know that I've seen this happen before myself, am I correct that someone opened the dumpster?
Yes, this has happened three or four times, and last, the last time was really where the, they, I don't know if it was a prank, that the trash was all over the back, I sent you photos of it. It was pretty nasty. So, and I spoke with Peter at the, I'm sorry, at Triple T Trucking, and, you know, see if there's any way that he could suggest how we could eliminate this from happening, and he said it's, you know, maybe they can put a lock on it or something, but, you know, things like this happen. But as I said before, it seems that we're using more and more, more and more people are using the dumpster than should be, and I'm just, you know, I'm getting a little tired of cleaning up every week and taking care of it. I do it, but it just gets old, you know? So I don't know, you know, at the rate we're going now, I think we'll be over budget with the dumpster, and, you know, I don't know what the future holds for us.
I mean, on that note, I guess I'll just, I'll just say that I did get a report of all of the activity, all of the recycling costs for the last fiscal year, which ended June 30th. And, you know, it's, costs float from one, the end of one year to the beginning of another year slightly, but I will, I will say that we are actually, we did end up possibly slightly under budget for the last fiscal year. Our costs were a little bit below $18,000, which is what we had budgeted for that fiscal year. We've budgeted $22,000 for this fiscal year. Granted, the tonnage fee has gone up in recent, recent months. $152 is what it is at currently.
And we were at $119 at one time.
I mean, it's gone up, I mean, obviously, that's partly why we've been budgeting more money for years to years, because the costs have been.
And the trucking's gone up a little bit.
I guess the thing I'd bring up as far as the site is concerned, and I know we've mentioned this before, you know, we have budgeted money for cleanup of that site. We could look into, and I think at one point Joseph was going to potentially check in with somebody who he's had, has a little bit of a relationship with, who does some trash collection in the town, as to whether we want to consider paying someone to check out that site once a week, or whatever frequency it, we might need to do it, and clean up the garbage that's there, so that our town clerk doesn't have to keep doing it.
Amen.
I know, but by the same token, I hate to see the town spend money that, you know, you know, I've been doing this for five years, and it's, it's, sometimes it gets frustrating, that, you know, and that's what happens, you know, I get frustrated, I get angry, and then I do it again next week, so, you know, but I still think that by keeping the site clean and picked up, it eliminates a lot of other people doing that same thing. There's that two or three people that no matter what you do, they're going to, they're going to be nasty, you know?
Yep. Bruce, do you want, did you have thoughts on this?
We spoke about this months ago, but is your implication with your wording that if we were to remove the dumpster, you think we're going to have a worse of a problem?
I personally think if the dumpsters were removed, people will, are so ingrained in dumping there, that they will continue to do that, and for quite a while. Finally, it will probably go away, but it's going to take a while. You know, I don't know, there's only two towns in our district that have dumpsters, and, you know, it's, the cost is going up, it's escalating each year, and I don't know what the answer is, to be honest with you, but we spent $5,000, $4,000 for the Wyndham Solid Waste, we're spending $22,000 now for our budget, so up to $26,000, $27,000 a year. That's a lot of money for a small town.
Yeah, it is, I mean, I guess the thing, I just remind everyone is, we had a vote on this at town meeting, and the townspeople voted by one to continue to offer this, so.
They seem to be.
You know, the cost, it was something that the town was willing to bear. However, the town is not, that doesn't mean that you as an individual need to bear the responsibility of cleaning up the trash that accumulates in that. So, I understand, I understand your point, and I know we've talked about it before, and I just want to reiterate that at any point in time, we can look into hiring someone to be more involved in that, so it doesn't always fall on you.
I want to see if we can eliminate the dumpster being open. That is a big, that's a serious thing, and I, I think the prank, I think it's somebody that's just, for whatever reason, has nothing else to do, and they just want to, you know, play games. And if we can eliminate that, that eliminates most of the problems. And, you know, trying to, you know, figure out the dumpster, when we should pick it up, when Thursday comes around, and I have to figure Thursday, Friday, Saturday before I call them, it's sometimes hard to do. So, you know, Monday we have an overflow situation, Triple T Trucking has been very good with us, they've worked with me, they usually send a truck when I tell them I'm in dire straits. So, that's helpful. I guess, like I say, if we can eliminate the, the problem with the kids, or whoever's doing it, that would be great, and hopefully Pete will come up with something.
Well, I'll get around to everybody else, but just Mark really quick has something.
I just wondered, would it be possible if the town paid, bought a padlock, have you put it on it when the new recycle bin shows up, and when you call, take it off?
Yeah, if he tells me that he's going to be here on a Tuesday, I can unlock it, and you know, I don't have to wait there because of their schedules. But yeah, I, I, I think that would be a good idea, I'll throw that at Pete and see what he thinks about it, you know, if it's not any convenience for him.
I mean, I feel that since the COVID-19 virus thing has come, we're definitely have way more traffic in town than we have ever had before.
Okay.
They're coming from every state in the United States. There was a big truck there today, it looked like a painter's truck, or not a painter's truck, but a construction truck, you know, the, the, not a box truck, it was a truck with like two boxes on the side, and he was, he was emptying out some.
Yeah.
I mean, on all of our side roads, particularly where we're parking out, and way more out-of-state traffic than I would discover here.
Joseph, any thoughts on this, or just want to make sure you have a chance to weigh in?
I don't really have any additional thoughts, and it is a shame that we have to continue to deal with this problem, but, yeah.
Shelby, how about you?
I guess, Guy, don't we pay, I mean, in theory, aren't we paying to pick it up, whether it's you or someone else? Because you're a paid employee?
I'm not, no, I don't get paid to do that.
No.
No, no, that's not part of my, my program.
He only gets paid for.
But it's work for doing for the town.
Not, not on Tuesdays and Thursdays. He gets paid for Tuesdays and Thursdays.
I have to say that if it's going to be an issue that's going to keep coming up, because it's making people so upset, I think that if we've already budgeted for it, I would rather spend a minimal amount of money to pay someone to clean it up, because at the end of the day, we can bring this up every other month at meetings, but unless we want to reverse a part of the budget that the town deliberately made a point to vote for, this isn't going to, we're not going to stop having recycling or potential issues that come up until next town meeting, if they choose not to have it. So, if it's really that, you know, that frustrating, I think we should just hire someone to do it, especially if it's budgeted for, because I don't, I kind of don't want to keep, we don't really have a solution, there's not really a solution, we can't put in cameras, we've kind of been through it all, it just sort of is what it is, and I don't really want to, part of me just doesn't want to keep having to rehash it and, you know, get the email with the picture every few weeks, like, it is what it is, and unless someone has a new idea, which it sounds like every time we bring it up, no one has a new idea, I would rather just kind of table the conversation, hire someone to clean it up so they're being paid, and they don't, you know, it is, that's their job, and they're getting paid to do it, and then we can address this again at town meeting. And maybe bring up these concerns, that it's not as simple as just whether or not we pay for it, it's also a place where people are, you know, meaning disrespectfully to our town. I don't know.
Guy, I mean, I don't want to throw this back on you, but should we more seriously look into finding someone who can go by there, I mean, I know that the prob, or someone that can be on call when you see something, rather than you having to do it? I know, the, the exact timing, I know, is going to be challenging.
The biggest problem, right, is, and I think Mark has, has got a good idea, and I'll run it past Peter at Triple T Trucking, is to put a lock on the back so no one can unlock it, and that could eliminate some of the problem. As far as people dumping there, it's going to be there, so I do it because I try to save the town a few bucks, and I also have a little pride in my town, and I like to make sure that it's clean around there. The fact that I bring it up from time to time just expresses my frustration with it, and maybe if more people became aware of it, they would maybe keep an eye for people that are doing that, and stop them from doing it.
And I have noticed, that even Guy has noticed, that occasionally, Guy says somebody picked it up.
Yeah.
So somebody other than him.
Yeah, some other people been.
Have been, when they saw a problem, they.
Yeah.
Guy said, somebody actually picked it up and put it in there. So that, I think we just, the, the community needs to do some responsibility.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Well, so I think, I think we should look into putting a lock on to at least, as long as Triple T doesn't have a problem with that, which I can't imagine they will, because that at least, like you say, maybe if that can eliminate the catastrophic problems that can happen to it if somebody opens it.
Do you think the reason they're opening it is to retrieve nickel cans?
I, I, I really don't know, it almost looks like it's a prank.
Yeah.
Because it looks like they just dumped it.
See you later.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I think, but that's pure speculation.
But we can't change it until March unless we had a special, a special meeting, 5% of the, have to have, have to have a 5%, there's no sense in doing that. Your idea is great, all these ideas would mitigate, would mitigate the problem until we get to March, and then we can straighten out whether it was in town or not. If it was only one vote last time, there's a real good chance you get rejected next year, but we'll have to wait and see.
Well, I think what dictates the vote will be the cost.
That's a discussion for another day.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll speak to Triple T, see if he says we get a lock, and if he says so, just go buy that lock.
Good.
Thanks.
Good, good, good.
Okay, moving on to six D, the letter from the Vermont State Police. So I sat around the stand at last week, hopefully everybody's had a chance to, to read it, I mean, to summarize, you know, they are making an effort, which they have been making for quite a while, to be sure that as much as possible that their policing practices are non-discriminatory and that they're, I think, to their, to their exact wording, that, you know, they're trying to keep things safe, Vermont a safe, just, and welcoming place for everyone. They're soliciting feedback from towns about how the towns wants the state police to function or be structured, or whatever concerns people may have, I think. I will freely admit, having read it and having read their website, the Fair and Impartial Policing and Community Affairs section of their website, I honestly don't know personally what I would even ask them to do, but that's me starting off, I guess. Let's go around and see if anybody has any thoughts on how, if, and if so, in what manner we may respond to them as far as what our towns' needs might be. Gwen, what's?
Well, I agree with you, I think they had a pretty good aspect to what they're doing, and we, the only thing I think is, we would like to see them here more often, but you can't have them here more often if they don't have the, they don't have the help, so. That's my only comment, is, we would like to see them a little more often in town, but that's not going to work. But that's not gonna work, they don't have the, the officers to do it.
Uh, Bruce, what's your thoughts, having read it and pondered it?
Well, I didn't, I didn't read that, but I can respond to what you're talking about. And Mark and I were just witness, uh, Guy going crazy one day when you were using your equipment. And I was just after something passed me doing fifty, go, go on past here. So, I guess what I'm stating is that, uh, it's a free for all in the town. I think they should know that. I don't know if that's gonna change where they police, but they should know. It's a free for all on Gracie Brook. And as to Joseph has said times and times again, it's just a matter of time, somebody's gonna be walking a walk in the door. Someone's gonna get freaking clipped. And, you know, I wasn't so, so excited when Joseph brought it all up last year, because we've discussed it before. But I'm now very much in agreement in his thought process about what's going on in this town. And I don't like it. You know, I have a tendency to go quick too, I'm not gonna be, but I don't go passing somebody on Gracie Brook Road with canoes on our roof, flat floorboard, or popping wheelies in there, ginseng lane. I don't know if anybody saw the rubber of the, of the tread marks in front of ginseng lane, but, yes, ginseng lane.
I've already seen the state police in town twice this week. Yeah, let's try to stay on topic for the.
That's it, that's all I have to say, that it's a free for all in town and they should hear where.
Uh, Joseph, how about you? What are your thoughts on, um,
I, I think this is a, obviously a pretty complex issue. It's affecting the entire country and I think one of the interesting things that we live with is that, uh, we hear the news from somebody, uh, of the population dense areas that have their own problems with, uh, law enforcement. And I don't think that those are always, um, the same problems that we deal with. One, the one suggestion that I could possibly have for the state police is that I'd like to see some sort of, uh, more dialogue. Not necessarily a dialogue, but a community style policing between the, the VSP and the, um, citizens of Vermont. Because, um, in all my dealings with them, they're, they're very friendly and, and professional and, and a letter like this is a, a good example of that. But I just feel like, eh, like your average person in Vermont never gets to see this, um, this side of them. So my suggestion would be that, uh, I think people would, would see what kind of people they are and that they're really trying to help if, if they could figure out some way to, um, communicate more directly with the, uh, the citizens of this town and, um, the rest of the state.
Okay. Just making some notes.
Oh, maybe you can do that at town meeting.
Shelby, how about you? What are your thoughts, having read that and given it some thought?
Um, I mean, yeah, pretty much what's already been said. I think that, I think right now, the issue around policing and stuff is a lot bigger than some of the stuff that's happening maybe in our town. But I think being a rural town that's geographically isolated from our local police department, like Gracie Brook, that actually has a course. I think that, um, that is something that we're missing is, you know, cohesive support from the, from law enforcement around us. And really being able to have our residents feel like they can access those resources. I don't think people feel like there's really anyone they can call and get, um, support from, from law enforcement if they really need it, um, in our town. So there's clearly a gap there. Even if like, I've had a bad experience, but I, I, I just definitely don't think that people in the area think that they can just reach out and get a lot of support and support and make, like, in a manner that would help them in the moment. That's what we saw with like Mero Drive and stuff, like, or the, you know, that situation. You know, the call, the answer is to call the, you know, call the police, but there's not a lot of faith, I think, in that that's gonna do anything. So there's definitely, um, I think some outreach they could do. And there's a way that they could be more of a presence in the community that might make them more approachable or a resource that's more heavily used in what is needed.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna suggest that, uh, possibly not for the next meeting, possibly for the meeting after. I'm gonna, I've, I've taken some notes about what we've all sort of said. And I'm gonna make an attempt at writing a letter of response back to them that incorporates all of these things. And then we'll circulate it and we can discuss it possibly at the September second meeting, but more likely the meeting after on, uh,
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth or whatever it is.
Yep.
Dave, uh.
Yes, Mark, sorry.
Um, speeding is always a topic in, uh, in our meetings and I know that state police have come to town and they'll set in certain areas, but I wonder if we made suggestions as to where they should set to the places where the people in Brookline know where the speeding is taking place most dangerously. I mean, a lot of times I've seen the, the state police set in slow mile per hour zones and try to get somebody doing a couple miles an hour over thirty-five. Where it's in the forty mile an hour zones where they're doing sixty and plus miles an hour. If we recommended areas where it's more obvious. I mean, not that it's not an issue at, at the low speeds, but it seems like there's certain areas where they can pick up and beat and, and they just get away with it at that time, so. Maybe something like that would be, uh, helpful for them. And, and also what kind of day, you know, I, I know, I don't know how they make their schedule up for, for Brookline, but if they learned when the speeders were actually, like, is it mornings? Is it late in the afternoon when people are getting out of work? Is it during the middle of the day when these people who don't work are just speeding? But maybe we could just guide them to go after those type of people.
No, that's, that's a good point. Okay, uh, any last thoughts on that before we move on? Come once, twice gone. Okay. Now, moving on to, uh, old business, first up is a building update. Mr. Mello.
Okay, I can look through this, I think, pretty well. Building number one. Here. You and I need to talk about the mice thing, we'll work on that on Sunday. My, my suggestion is that you, that the select board should consider putting air conditioning in here for next year. In light of, I bought two standalone rooms for my house, I think costing three to nine hundred bucks. And they are great. Very economical, you can put them into the wall, I can have one hooked up in here in ten, fifteen minutes. And it was, I'm just sitting time of coming in here and seeing people that are about fifty years old, sitting in a room for twelve hours a day, cleaning up an uncomfortable situation. So, that's kind of a tickle in the spine, something that we should consider for next year. So, in as much as we got a downtown improvement fund, forty-three hundred bucks, or we could work some other way out of financing. But it's not an expensive proposition. And I think we should give utmost consideration to the people that care enough to come in here and sit in here twelve, fourteen hours, don't lull on the hours, sorry, Guy, Gary.
Thank you.
A day. That's it for that. Now, to move on with the round schoolhouse. I did call, talked to Stephen Haskins, we met. He gave me some linseed oil, he told me how to treat them. We do have, still have powder post beetles. It's not bad yet, but we still have them, he said we're gonna have to treat them over a period of time. And what I saw didn't make me happy, and that's why I initiated it. And also, I was too happy with the cobwebs, the mold. I heard a couple of pretty good ideas. The first good idea I heard came from Mr. Wellman that said we should consider putting a, a solar dehumidifier in there. I think dehumidifier, no matter how we do it, we should do it. I'll go into electricity in a minute, but, um.
Can I just ask, has there been a discussion with the historical society about that building and the cobweb and other situations?
I did talk to Doug directly. I saw him right, right when I met with Stephen Haskins. He had to take a package up to my house in this place for the post office that we talked about. And he's the one that came, told me about his idea.
Okay, can I, sorry, not to interrupt you, but Joseph, has the historical society met in recent months at all?
No, we have not.
Okay. Is there a plan for it to meet at any point?
No, not currently, we, um, I mean, we all see each other, uh, in an unofficial manner, but we haven't, uh, really considered planning a meeting. I, I think, uh, COVID obviously has just, um, shaken up everybody's plans from here.
Sure, yeah.
If that's something that, um, that we think, that, or things we should do. Uh, and it seems like maybe, uh, we have a few things we could discuss. I can, uh, see about setting that up.
Uh, I mean, or honestly, I mean, if, if you just, if, if you guys have these discussions, I mean, I know Bruce has had some of the discussion with Doug. I just wanna make sure that you're, you weigh in on that discussion from a historical society standpoint, as well as Cynthia, if, if she is able to just weigh in on these things before we go too far down the road of deciding some stuff on her, and that's all.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, uh, Bruce and I, I kinda mentioned this, uh, last, uh, meeting. We never really got around to it, we're both pretty busy, but if you wanna, if we wanna just exchange a few emails about the specifics of what you, what you'd like to do, um, we could, we could certainly, I would certainly happily discuss it with, um, with you and then with Doug and Cynthia as well. I, I certainly think that it would be good to have us all in the conversation.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, so now to go back to you, Bruce, sorry.
Okay, that'll, that'll be fine. Um, I also wanted to suggest that maybe we should consider one or two more people on the, on the committee just to help out. In light of, I think we should have some kind of maintenance program for the building. I really don't like walking in a building, pushing the cobwebs away and seeing mold and a nineteen oh-two Encyclopedia Britannica like Stephen Haskins said. You better do something about the mold in this place. And so, this only needs to be talked about and considered. But I think a little help on the committee would be in light of, of two of the three members on the committee. Work a lot, I certainly can understand that. And the third member of the committee is eighty-seven years old. So, I would think that it'll be advantageous for the committee to consider adding one or two more people on if it's possible. And then I can also send you the ideas that I had, um, that I just spoke about, Jeff, Joseph. And one other thing, the electricity. Looked at that pretty closely. And we actually have a possible three needs of electricity in three, in the three buildings. Around schoolhouse, the church, and so Suzie's. Suzie's got specific issues, a specific, one specific issue is straightening out the, the heat in the, in the, um, in the downstairs, one section doesn't work. I tried to thermostat and work on it myself in life that I've, I've plung and wired a building myself in my own home, but it was a little past me, I don't really have the testing equipment and stuff to find out what the head's going on and what the hell they do with that building. So that's up to an electrician. The second part is the church dot made, made a work to me that, and you don't know this, that Perkins, um, Perkins Gas met with her last Friday. And it's gonna make a quote for putting heat just in the addition, but they're gonna need to have some kind of electrical outlet. So it's a second need for electric. The third one is if we consider putting an outlet in or do something over, over there when they're around schoolhouse, which might be a little bit more costly, because I can't find any overhead wires. So that, that brings up a whole set of challenges. So, uh, my obvious thought is maybe we can sell one electrician to look at all three of the situations and figure out what the total cost of all three things are and split according to the, to the funds to coordinate. Okay, now lastly, uh, Suzie's open house. We're moving really well along with these windows, they look really good. And Norman, uh, Norman's just been ready to give us the last twelve sashes, six windows for us to, to put in. Dave's, Dave's, my hero, has done an incredible job, um, refurbishing the sashes, straightening out cords so they go up easy, so the ladies in there can lift the, the windows easily. And within the next couple of weeks, we should have all the windows that are facing the street framed up with new wood, which we found out, which I think I knew and was clarified today. The old, the old boards were let paint. So my original idea was to scrape and repaint and then, and then we took it down. We replaced it one hundred percent. So that'll be done. Uh, and I think, I got a phone call today from, an email sent from Olivia, some pipe was banging downstairs, so I sent, scalded that, and an email, I sent a phone call, hopefully you responded to it. But other than that, oh, the dumpster. They, they responded, very pleased with the reaction. They took my considerations. They used the plywood way I suggested. In fact, they even improved it a little bit, moved it in a certain way that would make it a little tighter. Hey, I, I'm all for improvements and better ideas. So, and they cleaned up their mess.
That's great.
So this is all good stuff.
It's good.
And I can't think of that, if I can think of right now. So in the next couple of weeks, we should have the windows down, working, functional again. Not disrepair like our friends from Anderson Window said that they were, but very often they need to be repaired anymore.
Awesome.
I think that's it.
Great, thank you.
Good job, short and sleek.
Yeah, I'm just making sure I got it right, so it don't, so we, yeah, I got it.
Uh, okay, moving on to.
I have a question.
Yes, Joseph.
Uh, Bruce, I'm just curious, uh, how much extra money is being put into the windows on top of, uh, the bid that we had? I know, I know that we discussed that Dave was gonna do some work on just the ropes and, um, everything. Uh, I'm just curious if we're keeping track and, uh, and how much that extra money is gonna be?
Yes, the answer to your question is yes, and the answer to your, to your price, I can't give you an exact price answer, but he had done some work before he's done the windows. I'd say we're into him maybe, ooh, I can give you exacts, but I don't have that in front of me. Cause I haven't gotten a bill for the last two weeks, which isn't a lot, he's only fifteen dollars now. Maybe four to five hundred dollars labor at the most. I've rang up a bill at WW, I wanna say for a hundred bucks. And we're just about at the end of it in terms of costs, just the labor time to complete what he's doing, maybe the next two weekends, a hundred, two at the most.
Okay, and I, I don't mean to, uh.
I can't give you the exact numbers about what I'm about.
I don't mean to, to, to pick too much at, um, at things that, that we've already voted on, but it's, even if it is, uh, under a thousand dollars, that is, uh, a cost that's, um, I think goes hand in hand with the price of refurbishing the windows. So it, it just seems to me that, uh, you know, if, if we voted on fifty-five hundred dollars, if my memory serves me, that at the end of this, it, you know, might be sixty-five hundred or more or less. I, I just think that it's a little, um, in my mind, it, it changes the equation a little bit.
Fair enough. Uh, I, I guess I would just, I would just, uh, point out that we did, I mean, unless I'm mistaken, the bid to repair the windows did not include, the, or to, to repaint the windows did not include anything about opening and closing of the windows. And I, I understand your point that if we had gone the route of replacing the windows, then that's cost that wouldn't have necessarily needed to be incurred because the new windows were open and closed on their own. Yep, it's a, it's a fair point to make. I guess I'd suggest, Bruce, maybe, do you think by the next meeting, will all of Dave's work on those be complete? And could you give us an accurate accounting of what we've paid him to do that?
I can, I can give you an exact amount, I can give you the exact, I've got all the receipts. I can give you the exact amount of what WAP, what for boards for, for the chain and frame, which is a good move. So.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's follow up with that, because it would, would be good to know exactly what that kind of all means.
Total, total, cause we're gonna give him a check for fifty-five hundred bucks. And my guess is we'll be a little over six, the whole thing. And my guess is we'll be a little over $6, the whole thing, a little over $6.
Was that the only comment, question you had, Joseph?
Yes.
Okay. Shelby, anything, any questions for Bruce before we move on?
Uh, no, no questions.
Okay. Okay, moving on to 7E, the education tax rate, tax bill status. Guy, correct me if I'm wrong, I've been checking, we still don't have a tax rate, an education tax rate.
No, we do not as of 5 o'clock this evening. It was hoped that we would be looking at it this Monday or Tuesday, but Monday was a state holiday, Arlington Day. So we're hoping sometime this week that they will finally get to us and maybe next week generate a tax bill for the residents of Brookline.
Logistically, because I don't, I mean, I've never, since I've been in the town, we've not had this situation. When we do get an education tax rate, so that we're able to actually generate tax bills, how are we going to decide and who is going to decide when those tax bills will then be due? Since we've now blown past everything that was voted on in the town.
Normally our tax day would have been August 15th, but the governor signed some sort of, some piece of legislation giving towns the authority to move their collection dates, even though they were voted at town meeting, to what it is. So the law is firm. It says 30 days from the day that we mail it, you can collect the first payment. So what I'm hoping for, that we will have a payment in September, and then we will go back to our normal November, May, and I mean, November, February, and May. That's the hope right now.
Okay, so, and procedurally, do we think that, let's just say for the sake of argument, just to pick days, let's say we got the education tax rate set by the end of this week, and we did, the treasurer and others who were involved and knowledgeable about the printing of the tax bills determine, okay, we could get these in the mail by X date. Are they then empowered to set the due date as 30 days from that date?
Minimum of 30 days.
Right, okay, but so, or do we need to warn a special select board meeting, an emergency select board meeting in order to set that date? Or does the treasurer have the ability to do that under the provision, the changes that Scott has made?
But as far as the select board has to in fact set a new date, that's a question for Vermont League Cities of Towns, which I will post.
I think we should start asking that question, just so we know whether we need to, or whether it can be set without that.
I've been explaining to people that once we create the tax rate and we generate the tax bills, we will mail them out, and 30 days from that date will be the first due date, you know, in general. So, but I'll check with VLCT if there's something. Like I say, the governor...
And who has, who, who has to set that date? Is it the select board or can the treasurer set that date?
Okay, I will, I will get that and that'll give us enough time to, I'll have it for the next meeting, if not sooner.
Right, well, and presumably, if things were to move quickly, we might have to have emergency select board meeting on Monday in order to do that or something like that, if we are in that situation, I don't know. But yeah, if you could look into it.
We'll need a form, because I don't know.
Right. Okay, thank you, and let's just hope that they do it pretty quickly. And at this point, we have not yet, I mean, I assume we've seen nothing. Do we, do we know when the school board, when we anticipate the school board sending us a bill?
Well, normally it's every, it's twice a year, and I don't know if they've firmed up a date yet. I think they have to take in consideration that the towns have not had any revenue, and it's predicated on us.
I assume they understand that, that whether or not the towns pay those bills when we receive them will be dependent on whether we can collect the taxes ourselves. This is a problem that was entirely created by the school district and the state, not us as a town. So, yeah, okay. So we'll, yeah, we'll cross that bridge with potential. Okay, that segues into your general update report, Guy. What else?
Well, as we know, we had the Vermont State primary election on the 11th of August, and it was a busy time. It was a hot and humid day. We had 135 voters, 85 of those were absentee ballots. The county got a little disarrayed in the late evening, but we did well. And it was a precursor to the general election, which is in November, and hopefully we'll have the same five teams to count. I really would like to go over a few things, but I think we're going to have a large turnout because the state is going to mail every registered voter a ballot in November. So they'll start mailing them. In September, there's been a lot of scum, but all over television, all over radio. The bottom line is that our state is in good shape, and we have a good secretary of state, and I think we're in good shape for November.
So that has definitely been decided that they are mailing.
Oh, yes, that is. And people still may vote in person using the same guidelines that we've used for the primary, a mask, and sanitizer hands, and people have been very good with that, so I don't see the issue.
So how does that work? Do they bring the ballot that they get?
Now, what will happen is that if you elect to vote absentee, which you'll get in the mail, you will send it to your town, the town will, or drop it off or mail it however you wish to get it here in time for the general election, and we will enter it into the election system, and you will see on my voter page that your ballot has been here, and it's been ready to be counted.
But what my question was, for those that want to vote here, do they bring that absentee ballot with them?
No, when you, no, when you come here to vote, you can bring the absentee ballot with you. You certainly can. And drop it off here. That'll save you from waiting in line. You just drop it off. We check you in, we check you out, and that's it. It's easy. So there's no, no issue at all.
But it is worth probably mentioning for the record and for any townspeople who watch this, and we can perhaps remind them as we get closer, that if you are going to bring an absentee ballot physically here, you need to have followed the absentee ballot instructions and have it sealed within the envelope, or else it will be disqualified.
And signed and filled out.
Well, they changed the seal. The bottom line has to be in the envelope. But the most important thing, and I can't emphasize this enough, we had five defective ballots this last election because people did not fill out the envelope. We have highlighted it in yellow. We've done everything we can for you, but if you want your vote to count, you must read the back of the envelope and make sure that you sign it and put in the information they require you. That's all you have to do. It takes all of two seconds.
But you have the choice.
You can either go that way, or you can come here and get it.
Yeah. You can mail it, you can drop it on the office.
You have the physical system here on premise.
We did have somebody that needed help.
I'll bet.
Anything else, Guy?
No, that's it. And the office has been busy. We've had a number of real estate transactions going on. People are taking advantage of low interest rates and mortgages, and there's refinancing going on. So it's been a busy time in the town, but we're doing well.
Great, thank you. Moving on to 9A highways and roads, Mr. Bills, what's going on with you?
Okay, so we have been installing culverts in the past couple of weeks. We're halfway through the culvert inventory that purchased under budget. That's going very well. A new rented machine accomplished a lot of things that were on a general list of to-dos with a piece of machinery, a piece of equipment. And so that is going very well. We noticed another sign missing in town on Ellen Ware Road off in Hill Road. We're on a third Ellen Ware Road sign in one year, so I have to place another order for that sign. This time I'm going to do it a little differently.
Put it up high enough they can't reach it?
Yeah, they got a few...
15 feet or something.
The other thing I wanted to bring up tonight is I've heard from the winning bidders of the paving and the milling, and they were thankful for the wins. And then Archie has also talked with them. We set up a meeting. We met last night with the paving people, which is all steel and asphalt. And it looks like their schedule through our town is going to be September 14th, 15th, so it'll be mid-September. The millings guy, Brian Ciano, he called to see about when he could start the milling process. And after talking with Archie, that's when we decided to meet with the paver to set him up at a close, approximately, so there's not a big wait here between.
Yeah.
So Archie, after we gathered the information last night, Archie said he would call the milling company to see if he could get them to cooperate with the other person's schedule. So if anything goes according, or paving should take place mid-September.
Okay.
We showed him all the highlights to the job that we felt was worth knowing, and he gave us a lot of input on that. And I just wanted to say, I've used this rental machine to do a lot of different things. It's, you know, cleaning public culverts, correcting ditches that have eroded and causing road erosion. It's just a very nice multi-tool. It's everything that I thought it would be and more. This machine has a push blade you can use like a bulldozer. So after you dig a trench in the road to pull up the used culvert to apply the new one, you can use the blade to push dirt back in. The blade also has a trailer hitch now and on. So I've been pulling my utility trailer, which is 12 feet long. When the, before we hit the public culvert down the road here past Papoose Lane, we had purchased four 1-inch-thick steel plates to buy us some time. And so I'm using two of those with every culvert job I do in order to keep traffic flowing. We put in one culvert on one side of the road. Then, once it's gravelled, the gravel's still not compacted to its finest point, so we put a steel plate over that lane to allow trucks and cars to, and it's working great. So I've put these steel plates on the trailer, then I put two culverts on top. I've got all my road signs, my shovels, power, everything I need to do the job goes right with me out.
That's great.
When I come back, reload it and back it in the garage, it fits in beside the grader, and it's all loaded, ready for the next day.
Excellent. That's great.
It's really doing a nice, very efficient. So I'm just continuing on with all my water bar outlets on the roadside, cleaning those, and everything's going as scheduled.
Awesome. And you have the, you have that excavator for another week?
Yes, another two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah, right, because it came late, right?
Yeah, it came a week late.
A week late.
Yeah, so basically it was beginning of August to the end of...
Right, so basically, all right, okay.
Awesome. Mark and I asked this before, so write down this time. The name of that thing again?
It's JCB.
JCB.
Right?
110?
It's a 110 hybrid.
And the name of the company was out of Concord, New Hampshire?
The name of the rented company was Northland JCB.
Northland JCB.
Of Concord, New Hampshire.
Okay.
And they have several dealerships in New England. There's one in Burlington, Vermont area, two in New York, a couple in Massachusetts, Concord, New Hampshire. I think there's one in Connecticut. And the main factory plant is Georgia. They have a major factory down there.
You know where they are in Mass?
I don't remember the town, no. But if you punch in JCB, it lists them all right there on the quick.
Thank you. Excellent.
All right, thanks, Mark. Okay, moving on to communications. First up is email. The only email that I just wanted to note, and it's in the AP warrant, Jeff Nugent at the Wyndham Regional Commission had reached out to us to let us know that he had been told that, I guess there was a permit, the stormwater municipal roads permit, we didn't pay back in May or something when it was due, but we tracked down the details, and it's in the pay warrant this time for us to pay it because that will prevent us from being able to get some grant reimbursement down the road. So we're getting that taken care of.
Was that like a $200?
It's the $500.
$500.
Yeah. So that's in the special AP stuff today. Other than that, another thing from Jeff Nugent is that Mark and I applied for this Better Roads grant at the end of last year. Because of COVID, they still haven't awarded those grants. We still don't know whether we might get this grant or not. Potentially in September, they're going to notify more towns, but we don't know if we've gotten it or not gotten it at this point. But perhaps we will be pleasantly surprised at some point and find out if we got it. That's kind of it for emails. Physical mail. We got a postcard from VLCT about a virtual town fair in...
That's the one.
September, the end of September, beginning of October. This is the replacement for the physical town fair they normally do. Now it'll be done virtually. And then we also got some thing about various emergency supplies, which is addressed to microfontaine for dry foods and other cool stuff like that. That was it for physical mail. Moving on to pay orders. First up is the payroll warrants. We'll do the same sort of thing, although I'm going to adapt my process to speed things up. I'm now going to only ask people if you have questions. So if you haven't reviewed it, that would be one of the things that you would point out at that point. I'm not going to make you all answer to confusing questions. I'm sorry that I know that was causing problems for people. So payroll warrant. Gwen, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Bruce, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant? Joseph, do you have any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Shelby, any questions on the payroll warrant?
No.
Then I'd like to make a motion when we approve payroll warrant 2020-60 dated August 19th, 2020 in the amount of $1,550.10. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2020-60 dated August 19th, 2020 in the amount of $1,550, signified by saying aye? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, payroll warrant is approved. Uh, next up is, yeah, I don't think we did. Uh, next up is accounts payable warrant. Gwen, do you have any questions on the accounts payable warrant?
No.
Bruce, do you have any questions on the accounts payable warrant? Joseph, do you have any questions on the accounts payable warrant?
No.
Shelby, do you have any questions on the accounts payable warrant?
Nope.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant two zero two zero dash five nine, dated August eighteenth, twenty twenty, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Is there a second?
I guess I'll second it.
Seconded by Bruce again. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant two zero two zero dash five nine, dated August eighteenth, twenty twenty, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Then the AP warrant is also approved. Which brings us to setting the agenda for September second. So just a reminder, the September second meeting, the first thing on the agenda will be the Salt and Sand Shed presentation by Ram Bell. Uh, I still don't know exactly what that will be. My assumption is it will be, uh, some document or documents that he'll share, um, screen share over Zoom. Uh, but I will reach out to those guys just to make sure they're, uh, prepared for that and give them the meeting details once we have that. So that'll be on the agenda. That will maybe take a little bit of time, um, probably not too long, but a bit of time. We'll revisit the SLP painting and staining bids that we tabled tonight. The other thing I'm gonna put on there for, uh, next meeting, and I will produce a draft of it prior to that, is, it's time for us to get the plowing and sand bids ready to publish. So I think we should put that on that agenda. So we'll have a draft of those, uh, to hopefully approve and...
Put them before September, right? Sixteenth, if you wanna go.
Yeah, although, well, I'm just looking at the calendar now, and I'm, I'm actually wondering, we might actually, I might actually push that back to the sixteenth, just because Labor Day weekend is, um, not that, again, I, I think we all know who the likely one or possibly two vendors are to bid on this, but still, uh, it might not make sense to publish them Labor Day weekend. So maybe we'll push that back to the sixteenth to have them open to the first, at the first meeting in October. That's kind of the timing that we've typically done, I think. Uh, so maybe we'll push that, I, oh, I don't know, we'll see, I'll, I'll give it a little bit of thought. Anything else? Gwen, that you can think of for the agenda for September second, other than the normal stuff? Bruce, anything else you can think of for the agenda, other than the normal stuff? Maybe us building update, maybe one of those things?
Property taxes may be an issue.
Property taxes?
Right, that's, yeah, we'll put it on there, yeah, right, I'll put that on as well. Uh, Joseph, anything else you can think of for the agenda for September second?
No.
Shelby, anything for you that you can think of for the agenda?
I don't know.
Okay, then, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
One second.
But Bruce is gonna make that motion anyway. I'm gonna say Bruce made the motion to adjourn, it was seconded by Gwen. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at eight twenty-five.